I would like to call the May 24th, 2023 City Council Regular Meeting to order. Will everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which has passed, "One Nation, Under God," in the Constitution of America.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kerry?
President.
Hutchings?
Here.
Chilton?
Oh, Mr. Chilton has asked, requested an excused absence.
Nelson?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Whackler?
Present.
You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Mr. Kerry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda as presented to us.
Thank you. May I have a second please? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I move to add Lay Down Action Memorandum 2023-011, Kenai Peninsula Borough Ordinance 2023-11, Amendment to the Agenda and Consent Agenda as new business item 7C3.
Are there any objections to adding the Action Memorandum to the Agenda? Saying none, it is so added. Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
May 10th, 2023, Council Meeting Minutes. Ordinance 2023-015, Accepting Grant Funds from Smart Growth America SGA and Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $10,000 in the miscellaneous grant funds to design and implement a street safety demonstration project sponsored by the city manager. Public hearing on June 14th. Ordinance 2023-016, Amending Saldana Municipal Code 8.30.030 Regarding City Comments on State Marijuana Licenses Sponsored by the Mayor. Public hearing on June 14th, 2023. Ordinance 2023-017, Amending Chapter 2.282, 2.28240 of the Saldana Municipal Code Clarifying Employees Eligibility for Health and Life Insurance Benefits. Sponsored by the city manager. Public hearing on June 14th, 2023. Resolution 2023-037, Amending the Parks and Rec Recreation Fee Schedule. Sponsored by the city manager. Resolution 2023-038, Authorizing an Extension of an Animal Control Shelter Services Agreement with the city of Kenai. Sponsored by the city of Manager. Resolution 2023-039, Authorizing Signatures for the City of Saldana Accounts with First National Bank Alaska and other various investment companies with whom the city does business. Sponsored by the city manager. Resolution 2023-040, Commending the Central Peninsula Swimmers for participating in the U.S. Masters Spring Nationals. Sponsored by the mayor. We have two informational memos, 2023 Scholarship Awards and an informational memo regarding Progress Days. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any of the items the clerk just read? Saying none, we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised under Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the Approve of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Saying none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. At this time, I'm going to read aloud and present Resolution 2023-040.
Speak into that microphone. You speak into that microphone. She's got me. Got me.
Everybody ready? First thing I'll warn you, I'm terrible on names. I usually mess them up. So this is Resolution 2023-040, a resolution commending the Central Peninsula Swimmers for participating in the U.S. Masters Spring Nationals. Whereas the top of the world swimming owes team members Kendra Ashwell, Carol Ann Barum, Jonah Beach, Angie Brennan, Danny McIntosh, Lucas Peterson, and Michelle Turnsky completed the USMS Spring National Championship from April 27th, 2023 to April 30th, 2023. Whereas all seven of these swimmers hail from the Kenai-Saldana area. Whereas these athletes demonstrated superior athleticism, motivation, and tenacity through competing in a combined total of 36 events during the four-day championship. And whereas Kendra Ashwell, Angie Brennan, and Lucas Peterson secured a combined total of five age group medals. And whereas Lucas Peterson, along with three other Alaskan swimmers, set a new Alaska state record for his age group in the 200-yard medley relay. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the city of Saldana, that the mayor and city council of the city of Saldana extend their sincere congratulations for the accomplishments and sacrifice these athletes and those who support them have made. The resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. I'll give you this copy right now. Sure. How do you want to do this?
Probably be facing that way. Or so. Sorry, basically some of the weather. So you sit here.
Okay. All right. I have a little break.
I'm not going to break anything.
One of you by Dan, that's for sure.
You know, we're going to have to double up. There's no way.
Got enough.
Yeah, I'll be on this side. Oh, that was me.
Adam? Want me in this or not?
You want, yes. Danny, come on out.
Sure. Sure. Was this the where? I'm not known as you remember. I would call this same. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And that will be Public Comments and Presentations. Items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes aggregate. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. Raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber wishing? Please step forward.
This is not.
This is for items not on the agenda. Okay? That is on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Saying none, we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised. Moving on to the next agenda item is Assembly Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I see two members from the borough here and.
Tyson Cox, Assembly Seat District Four, which is Saldana area. And I was just going to update a little bit. We will have our final budget hearing on 6/6 at that meeting. And so right now, there's only been very few amendments made. We had two small ones that myself and Mr. Hibbert brought forward for KPED and the Small Business District. Other than that, the only other one I see on there is one from Elam, which is going to be for CES. And it's also not a large amount. I think it's $8,500. There may be other ones, but I don't. My opinion is I don't believe I'll see a bunch of very large ones. We do have some things that we will be talking about. Part of the reason that I'm here and Mr. Johnson is to listen tonight to your guys' budget and listen in on what's going on there. And then also, I think President Johnson will be talking later during one of your other items. So that's why I was speaking to this. If there are any questions, let me.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, and I wanted to congratulate Ms. Bauer on the city manager position. I hope to talk to you soon. I haven't got to speak to you yet, so.
Sitting in the hot seat next to me.
That's right.
Mayor Whitney, members of the council, a lot of faces that I admire and love here. I see. I just thought I would come up and say hi. Brent Johnson, President of the Assembly, Vice President Cox covered pretty much everything, but I just want to give you an opportunity to ask me anything you like. And I'll be speaking on a item that's coming up later on your agenda.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, Assembly President Johnson, for coming tonight. Anything coming forward in the future that we should be aware of?
Nothing that I can think of off the top of my head, you know? As you know, the city of Saldana and the other cities and the borough work together on just a whole lot of things. The borough collects both property and sales tax and remits them to the cities. And we take the Board of Equalization Tax Appeals and work those out to both to the borough and the city's benefit. So the way I view life is we're together in this government and we're, you know, it's all going okay.
Well, just a follow-up comment. I appreciate the cooperation and collaboration that we get from the borough. So thank you and let folks there at the borough know that we appreciate it as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parker.
Mr. Kerry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. President. The new fire emergency station, any timeframe in terms of when things are going to start? And again, how's that moving?
Through the mayor, Mr. Kerry, it's moving great as far as I know. I know we have already made the first payment on the bonding. That part I know. And I talked to Chief Roy pretty frequently. And as far as I know, everything's going along smooth. I don't know any, I don't have any additional information.
Would you figure like a two-year till finish? Do you have any timeframe? How long before would be open?
I'd better not say, but I would think two years, yeah. I like that. I can't imagine a project taking longer than two years, but then I'm a homesteader and in government, things sometimes take longer.
And I just add one more thing. I'm very involved with Bishop's Attic Board of Directors and we're on the same road. We're right next to each other almost. So wherever we can coordinate, it'd be really nice, particularly in terms of how it's going to impact people trying to get into Bishop's Attic off of Wilson. Thank you, and I appreciate the work you're doing and all of you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the council? Saying none?
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item is number six, Public Hearings. Ordinance 2023-014, Adopting the Biannual Operating Budget and Establishing Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2024 and 2025. Introduced by the city manager, may I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to enact Ordinance 2023-014, Adopting the Biannual Operating Budget and Establishing Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2024 and 2025.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. A report from the administration.
Thank you for that. Thank you. First, I want to thank the Finance Director and Stephanie for all of the work that was done before I arrived here and for your work on the budget as well. The budget work sessions were held on April 24th and 25th and introduction, of course, the budget on May 10th. With public hearing tonight and budget adoption. At this time, the numbers that are in your packet are as presented to you on May 10th. Other than correction of a few typos, nothing has been changed. And you do have before you requested amendments along with information about the amendments impacting the budget and the impact to the budget.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on Ordinance 2023-014, which is the city budget? Sir, I believe you wanted to comment on the budget.
For anybody who's here to talk about potential funding for the non-departmental Salteshi Historical Society, Senior Center, and Boys and Girls Club, this would be the time where you would come and talk.
Please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Ken Lauser. I live here in Saldana. And my concerns are about Saldana Senior Center and the budget that was submitted. It shall be the duty of the Board of Directors to exercise general supervision and control of funds and property. It is the governing authority legally and morally responsible for all activities, ultimate responsibility for internal policy and approves and monitors corporations' finances. In September of '22, DHSS versus Department of Health and Social Services notified the Senior Center that upon consideration of the proposed evaluation committee and staff, we regret to inform you that you will not receive an award. The grant request was for $117,000 for '23, '24, and '25. Okay? It was appealed then and all this is factual. I got all of it in FOIA and public records access as well as other letters. After submitting the grant, I, Loretta Spalding, Executive Director, had several front office staff members delete emails and other important information relating to grants, banking, et cetera. This was a purposeful attempt to have me removed from the director's position as they disagreed with my management style. Unfortunately, part of their insubordination kept me from receiving grant updates and correspondence. DHSS did accept the appeal and wrote the following denial, which again are quotes strictly from DHSS. The department held it and, let's see, the application submitted and lacks sufficient details to justify funding, noting multiple areas that did not meet the application standards, including: "Project narratives were general to all agency operations. Questions were copied, pasted, and responsive from prior questions. Multiple questions did not answer the question. Outcomes for the project were underdeveloped and lack detail. Did not provide sufficient detail or description. Budget was incomplete and did not adhere to provided instructions. Incorrect methodology was allocated requiring matching funds. Incorrect and incomplete narrative justifications and budget allocations for personnel services costs. Insufficient detail and narrative justification for facility costs, supply costs, equipment costs, and other costs. Copied and pasted from a previous answer. Incomplete and did not adhere to provided instructions. Deficiencies included missing information and errors in the budgetary information. Total formulae on the summary page were overwritten with hard numbers to match the budget. Missing resumes of project staff. Procedures to protect client confidentiality inadequate. Overall deficiency of detail." I am upholding the decision that your proposed, your proposal does not get awarded to the fiscal year '23, '24, and '25. This constitutes a final agency action. You may appeal this decision to the Alaska Superior Court. Sincerely, Adam Crumb, Commissioner, concerning the budget. Senior Center sent a letter along with the fiscal year '24 budget stating that Senior Center was not offered a continuation grant and is under investigation by the governor's office. That grant was available, provided that it met state applications criteria. And I already mentioned why the last one wasn't approved. The commissioner stated you may appeal to the Alaska Superior Court and not the governor as the letter request states. City budget submission shows an expenditures of $714,600 and revenue of $250,000, a deficit of $465,605. Previous budget submissions were balanced. Gaming reports submitted to the state of Alaska, public access records, in '21 show a net profit of $222,000, of which $209,000 was donated for senior services that year as required by state regulations. Annual gaming report filed with the state of Alaska in calendar year '22 showed a net profit of $247,907, of which in the annual report, nothing was shown as having been donated to the Senior Center for senior programs. This '24 budget that's submitted should contain a revenue source of gaming donations, as it always has in the past, descending from $180,000 to $200,000 a year. Board of Director Financial Overview on November 23 of 2022 shows an Edward Jones portfolio of $1,357,769, which is not mentioned in the budget request either. That's self-produced at the Senior Center. Those are not my figures. And as I said before, everything came through FOIA and public records access.
Any questions for the speaker? Mr. Kerry?
Just want to, just want to say Ken, I appreciate very much your years and years and years of service to the Senior Center.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Are you speaking in support of the budget recommendation or opposed to it or want to change it or?
I'm opposed to it. They got a $465,605 deficit in their budget. And if the city tries to fund the Senior Center, this budget is going to carry on through '23, '24, and '25. So it's an obligation that you semi-commit to. If you do it for this year, then you're kind of committed to next year and possibly the year after. So it's something the council needs to be aware of when they make the decision, what they do with their budget.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, sir, for your testimony here. Can you provide, you provided us with a lot of information. Can you provide those written comments to the clerk? Thank you.
You want them? I got copies. Anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 2023-014? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Julie West. I'm opposing against the funding for the Senior Center. I was a 12-year-long employee there and Ms. Spalding walked in after two months of employment and attempted to terminate me with Ken Lauser. And the accusations, she was accusing me of fraud and other things. And I explained myself to her and defended myself. And she said, oh, I'm sorry, must be a very big misunderstanding. You can keep your job. Two days later, she came in and she said, in front of a customer, you are fired. I said, why? And she says, well, I don't have to give you a reason. I said, well, I've been here 12 years. I've never been troubled. I've never been reprimanded, never did anything wrong, so.
I'm going to interrupt you here for a second. We're not here to discuss personalities. We're here to discuss the budget.
Okay, so in the budget, I was bringing in a very significant amount to the Senior Center because I ran the Pool Tab Store, which was a nonprofit organization. And I was bringing in a significant amount, which you can get documents from, from the Senior Center or from other people that have them, or Lily Ken has them. And the termination of that has caused the Senior Center to completely crash. And they have lost a significant amount of money due to her decision and false accusations and the board members not following through and doing their job.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Saying none, thank you very much. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
So Ms. West? So you said you worked in the Pool Tabs?
Yes, I worked for Senior Center for 12 years. I was the manager of the Pool Tabs for seven years.
And can you familiarize me, because I'm not familiar with Pool Tabs and the whole operation? So are there reports that you provide through your executive director that go to the state on your process procedures, revenues income, revenues out?
Yes, I do all the, I would do all the paperwork. And then all my paperwork would be forwarded to Ken, who just spoke. And then all the documents would be reported to the state of Alaska, reporting your quarterly, your annually, and your fiscal year budget.
Thank you.
Any other question? Ms. Hutchings?
Julie, I'm looking at forms that were pulled off the Department of Revenue Tax Division. And when were you let removed from your position?
February 10th, 2022.
Okay, so the 2021 would have been income that would have been generated while you were there.
Absolutely.
And as I read this from the state of Alaska, it looks like the gross receipts were $2232,639. And after profits and whatever you ended up with, and there were expenses on that that came to $214,570. So you ended up with $222,864 in net proceeds that you had to pay, I believe, a 1% tax on. Is that not correct?
That would be something Ken handled, so I don't know exact numbers on that.
So then I look at December 2022. So you would have only been there, what, one month, two months?
I was there one month and nine days.
Okay. So I noticed there was a significant drop from $2.2 million down to $1.2 million.
That's correct.
I also saw that there were gross, adjusted gross income of $247,907, but there were absolutely no expenses shown against that.
Which should be completely false.
So in other words, the Senior Center paid their 1% tax on an erroneous net proceeds because they did not take the expenses out of that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Saying none, anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 2023-014? Move the microphone over. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Michael Sweeney and I'm 249, no, 279, oh, 249, Riverwise Drive. That's not on my license, sorry. Okay, but anyway. I'm speaking about what happened about a year ago and. And an individual came up to me, and matter of fact, he called me, he called me. And he was on the endowment board of the seniors. And so, so was I. And there's, there was about nine of us. And our last meeting was during COVID. And it was with John Walker, the previous person that ran the, the director there. And there was concern about the endowment fund, which was like two hundred thousand dollars or something like that, that we put together in the last, you know, thirty years, I suppose. I've been on it for probably twenty-five. And, and I just came to a meeting and, matter of fact, I stopped by to talk to a few people. And they said, well, there's a board meeting. So I came to the board meeting. And I went in there and, oh, I guess the director wasn't there yet. And I knew Bill, I knew a few other people on the board there that was there at that time. And we were just talking. And as soon as Loretta came in, and I guess, oh, we're not talking about that. But anyway, the concern was that we needed to know if the endowment was touched. And about a year ago is when this happened with me. And they found out that if, if there was, it wasn't much of anything. So my concern isn't the endowment money, but the way it's run and also losing the money that I've been told that we've been losing last year and a half. And that's a big concern because I remember when this was built, you know, the senior center was built. I remember a lot of stuff, but anyway, this community means a lot to me. And, and I believe it means a lot to you people, too. And I think the senior center is in trouble. And I think we need to get back to where we were.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Mr. Sweeney, if you could keep the mic for now. So would you support the city of Soldatna providing funding to the senior center at this time?
At this time, this budget, I'd say no, I would not.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sweeney? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-four? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is William Poo. My address is three-seven-five-eight-nine-Funny-Moose Lane. I was the former treasurer of the senior center for about five months. And after this young lady was fired, was when I came on board, I saw the results of what happened, that management skills were not followed, to see the problems that were there at the pull tabs that could have been straightened out. She shouldn't have been fired. It could have been straightened out, but it went on from there because the management, the skills of a person laid out an open field, they fired off a bunch of people unnecessary. They'd been there many years, skill levels that could have kept the center going. Monetarily, the city should take it over, the senior center, and change management the way it is now because it went down the hill. I spoke my piece out of turn, had to terminate my tenure with the senior center. I did that because I spoke out of turn. So I saw stuff, I said my piece, and that was it. But you're looking at the financial wealth of the center and the well-being, and that's why I did it. And I hope you don't issue the money to the senior center, but I would take it over. Take it over and run it, change the venue of the people in charge because that's what it's going to need. People on the board that were there when I was there were bobbleheads. So they did not think, you know, so what was going on? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-four? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jan Fina, and my address is post office box nine-zero-two Sterling, Alaska. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the seniors in the Soldatna area. Soldatna Senior Center provides services for three areas, and the boundary is established by the borough. Since I've retired, my phone has not quit ringing. Been retired for, going on six years this coming August. Last week, I got another call from a ninety-five-year-old woman. And she asked me if there was anything I could do to help the senior center so that people that went to the senior center, like herself, would feel comfortable being there and have the services they did previously. I told her, no, I cannot do that for you. You've got staff there and you've got a board of directors. So over the years, as I've received these phone calls from concerned seniors, and that's why I'm here, and I, I am the voice for them. They are concerned about their senior center. That senior center has been there for, been in place for thirty-seven years. It was incorporated in nineteen eighty-six. And if there's any grants lost or any funding that's, that's not available through fundraising or however they accomplish their budget, any funds is a direct problem. If they don't have the funds, it's a direct problem with providing the senior services that they rely on. If you talk about home-delivered meals, not only they appreciate and rely on those hot home-delivered meals, but more importantly is the daily wellness check for those seniors. And over the years, we found many seniors in compromised positions that we needed to call EMS and have, have help brought to them. That is really the biggest priority of that senior center is the homebound seniors. And along with the congregate meals and activities and socializing and all, all of those events that should be within a senior center, it's really important for all the seniors out there. And, you know, our senior population is not getting any smaller, it's getting bigger. In fact, Alaska's got the fastest-growing senior population in the United States. When I'm receiving these calls, I have great concern because seniors want to be able to come to that senior center, be able to socialize, have a meal, and feel that they are welcome. And that's really, really important to them. And losing, losing grants and not having the funding in place to provide all those services is, is a big detriment to our seniors and to our community. So.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Autry.
So what was your position at the senior center?
I was executive director for twenty and a half years at Soldatna Senior Center.
Did you fill out the grant applications?
Yes, it was my responsibility to write all the grants.
Did you ever lose a grant?
No.
Thank you.
Any other, Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you for coming tonight and for your years of service and for the support that you've provided me in the past and my family. Same question I asked the gentleman before, Mr. Sweeney. Do you think the city of Soldatna should be providing funding to the senior center?
At this point in time, I do not think so. I think that there has to be, and this is my own, my own opinion, there has to be an audit, has to be a full audit before more funding comes forward. Because if you, if you have a budget that's not balanced and you are in the red, I don't see any way out of it. And other than having an audit and see where you are and where to pick it up from there and proceed forward with it. So that's what I think.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Whackler.
Excuse me, Ms. Sweeney. Could you speak to any of the specific services that, that were there six, four years ago that are now disappearing, specific things that, that were available that are now?
I believe that most of the services are still there, but the seniors that were getting the services no longer are. For instance, the home-delivered meals, congregate meals, and there are many, many other support services within that senior center that seniors do come in to get help with. So I don't see that there's any services that are not in place. But the concern is, is the, the quality of the services. And again, my biggest concern is the seniors that are out in our community feel that they can't go there because they, they feel uncomfortable and they feel that they're not going to be able to get the services that they need. So what they're doing is they're going to other senior centers now. And that, that just, it just, it makes me very sad that they have to do that because that senior center is for all seniors. And that senior center has always had an open-door policy for every senior in the State of Alaska.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-four? If you want to speak right now, you can step forward and, up to you. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Darlene Tatchick, AKA Doty Tatchick. Everybody knows me as that. I live at three-seventeen West Vine in Soldatna. And I'm sitting here listening to the need of all of this money that the senior center needs. In two thousand eight, after a board meeting, Pearl Burton, one of our esteemed elders from the community, Jan Fina, Marge Adolf, and I were sitting around after a board meeting discussing things. Pearl Burton, who did a lot of crocheting and knitting, and Marge did, too, made the comment, wouldn't it be nice if we had a gift shop? And me, I said, why not? Let's do it. Jan gave me a room, and I had one table, one round table. And it grew to seven tables and a desk. I spent weekends, and I spent countless times at bazaars and summer markets approaching people, would you like to come into the senior center with your handmade items? It saves the seniors from having to go out to search for things, and it was convenient for them. And I had a lot of people come in. I had, I think, twenty-three, maybe twenty-seven artisans when I left the senior center, when I turned over the gift shop. It was a very small amount of money that the senior center got from it. It was like twenty percent of what the people sold, but it was all handmade, handcrafted. The seniors loved coming into that room, shopping, and maybe just coming in and, oh, I need a card, there's a card, I need, oh, I've got somebody's got a birthday coming up. And look, there's pot holders and there's pillowcases. But it was convenient for the seniors, and they loved hanging out in there, coming in, volunteering. I had a lot of volunteers that helped me in the gift shop. And since it has closed, we were told, we were given thirty days to get our things out of there because they needed the room. Well, to begin with, it was, uh, three different reasons. And I think what it basically, basically came down to is an, an office for the new director. But since I've left the senior, I have not walked back into that building in two years. I walked out, I said, I'm done. I have seniors come to me all the time and say, we miss your gift shop, we miss, we're angry, we're upset that we don't have that, that shopping area anymore. It was convenient and it was safe. And that's all I can say. It's not a big amount of money, but seniors aren't about money, it's about being cared for.
Any questions from the council? I do have one.
Yes.
On the budget item that's before us, are you in favor of the funding for the senior citizen?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-one-four? Ma'am, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Irene Pipkin, three-zero-six-one-two, Peanuts Court, Soldatna. I started there December sixth of two thousand twenty-one as an accountant, and I was Ken's right hand, basically. Worked there for about eight months. The books were kind of a mess as far as the accounting level, but not the actual financing. We're talking about the software program, those reconciliation reports, trying to get them matched. My understanding was it was a whole new software program, which I didn't have any experience with, but I was able to come in and pretty much clean most of those up with Ken's help. A lot of times I did some backup work for Loretta. Some of the provider enrollments for Medicaid were not turned in and/or were missing documentation. And the last one that I did report, the, there was a lot of documentation that I had to gather before that submittal. And the issue was that it was a total application for the provider enrollment, not the provider Medicaid actual program. So they're two different programs. I used to be a care coordinator for the State of Alaska, so I was familiar with those two programs. And they gave a deadline. However, Loretta was out on vacation, and I was directed by Ken just to go ahead. He asked if I knew how to do it. I said, yeah, I know how to do it. We only had less than twenty-four hours to get it submitted. And it was already on the second request, so I was able to get that done. As far as finances, like I said, I was Ken's right hand. We were pretty, doing pretty good as far as the budget there. Things were being paid, everything was being, was looking good, best I've ever seen, actually. And it was a happy crew. Seniors were happy, there were smiles when they were coming in. And then, after Ken was fired, which was in June, I was actually out of the office that day, and then I was notified as I was coming in that she had fired Ken. And so I was kind of at a loss because he was my right hand, and what he trained me with was pretty much everything that, what he did. And I, I appall, I mean, I, if he was not able to train me for that, I would have ever been able to finish what I was able to do and still keep that business afloat. So I, I was doing all the finances. Then I, I was off on a Monday because I don't work on Mondays, and I got a call from the admin. I was off on a Monday because I don't work on Mondays and I got a call from the admin assistant that said six employees, including Loretta, had walked out right before they were supposed to be pro- provide meals for the twelve o'clock lunch. And she wanted direction on what to do and I asked her if the board was still there because they were having a board meeting that day and she said, yes, they are. I directed her to proceed to the board and get some direction for the board members to find out what they were going to do. Because most of those six, the three that were left in the kitchen in between me and the admin assistants, we were able to keep those doors open and provide the lunch for those seniors that day. Then we were informed by Monday when we came in, the admin assistant and myself, that, um, they had had a meeting that we weren't aware about and that Loretta was placed on admin leave. And it was announced to the members at lunch. And then, uh, they had called me in the office and, um, they pretty much called everyone in the office to ask if they were willing to stay. Everyone said, yeah. So as the week went by, um, I don't know, there was a special board meeting at that time. And then I came in, it's on a Friday, and the day before Loretta had, had mentioned that a FedEx envelope was going to be coming in and for the admin staff, if it is, to set it on our desk. I was adamantly there working late on payroll and, uh, it came in about five thirty, five o'clock, five thirty. I didn't look at the time. I was just wrapping up my stuff. The FedEx guy was there. I grabbed the envelope, set it on my desk, locked my door, walked out. The next day I got a text from Loretta. Oh, um, basically stating that I, um, opened up this envelope and I am now being accused of mail fraud, which she presented a letter to the board for that after I filed my grievance form to the board. That I was directed by the president and the vice president to do. And then I was adamantly fired after that.
Any questions from the council? I, I have a question. Um, you was, were working there as an accountant or a bookkeeper?
Yes.
Uh, and when were, when was your last day?
September, September third of twenty-two.
Do you know if taxes have been filed, state and federal taxes and, um, any audits done?
Prior to my departure, they were.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four? Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Kristen Lambert. I live at three nine five Monte Drive in Soldatna. I didn't want to speak now and I, but I guess Loretta is going to be able to get her way so that we all have to speak first. I would just say, I don't even know what to say. My background is in grant writing and, uh, and manage, executive director management, all the way from Coconut Native Association where we ran six million dollars worth of funding every year for three hundred and forty clients at eighteen different grants running concurrently, all grant written by my staff, all the way through setting up carts also with grants and earmarks from Congress. And then to my final years at the North Slope Borough where I also was grant writing and directing in the housing department. So I know a lot about grant writing and I have nothing but praise to get, say, for Jan and Ken for the twenty-some years that they ran the Soldatna Senior Center and paid for it the whole time and even accumulated money in the endowment fund. So, so as you probably know, if you lived here very long, the city of Soldatna was very, very, very proud of the senior center. We are not, we were not under the municipality. It is a separate, private nonprofit and did extremely well for a very long time. So this sudden crash of not receiving grant funding from the same grants that we received grant funding every single year, all of a sudden not getting any is, is a bad sign. There's no doubt about it. And if they're in, in the hole for four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, that tells you something. But more than that, what I would like to speak to is the support of the community because the senior center is, was very important to not just the seniors, but the entire community. In fact, some of the seniors now who don't go there, and that has to, I'm sorry to say, include me. This year I went and made, joined, bought a lifetime membership to the Sterling Senior Center where they, where it's pleasant and people are working together and everybody, the community is supportive and proud of it again because that is not happening in Soldatna. People were getting, are getting fired right and left and threatened with getting fired. If they didn't get fired, then you could get fired because they're not following any of the wage and hour requirements from the state of Alaska for thirty days' notice and right to cure and all the things that I know from being a manager. The Board of Directors, unfortunately, is not taking control like they should because it's a nonprofit board and they should be in charge. They are not in charge. And in fact, recently, uh, uh, addendum to the, uh, bylaws was passed unwillingly in spite of people warning them that it wasn't legal, that, that the executive director would have a hundred percent authority to hire and fire any staff without any approval by the Board of Directors, which is not correct. It's in fact the opposite of correct for a nonprofit board. In fact, the seniors that I still go visit, even if they're getting daily meals, everything is going downhill. It is very embarrassing. And I understand the rumors in the community are going rife and it just makes me sick that we should be ashamed of what's going on in Soldatna instead of proud of it. And there has to be some cure. If you want to ask me, do I think the city of Soldatna should all of a sudden step in and pay a half a million dollars to keep the senior center going? That is not the responsibility of the city. That's the responsibility of the nonprofit board and the nonprofit agency that the senior center is. If there is no other solution, believe me, that did work in Kenai. When Kenai took over the senior center and they made it a department of the city, there is a higher authority than the, than the Board of Directors or than the executive director in this case.
Any questions or comments, questions from the council? Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four, the annual and biannual budget? Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Trumpeter, I'm Rob Wolf. Was on the board for a few years. Um, I was the vice president in the last position. And, uh, I've been hearing of what people are saying. And it's all true, uh, that, um, policy changed from the, uh, it was changed and that was in the, uh, uh, policy to protect the employees. And, uh, was removed, gave Loretta the authority to fire and hire people, which caused a great turmoil amongst all the, uh, seniors. That was a big one. But I guess the bottom line is that we knew we had a problem there and, uh, we tried to pretty much terminate Loretta, get another director in there, but.
Not getting into personalities here.
No, but I'm just saying, uh, a lot of these problems from money coming because there's no attendance because no one really feels welcome to go there anymore. And, uh, I saw it coming and I, we tried to take action, but the board hired it back. So basically the board is dysfunctional to say it, to say it nicely. And I, I'm, I'm in for favor of take the city take over, rather give it back to that dysfunctional board. And that's all my two cents is.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak on, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. And you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Lisa Riley, four two four three one Salamataf Road, Soldatna. I work for the senior center. I have been working for the senior center for five years. I started at the Pull tab store. And I now am at the senior center every day. The last few years have been a power struggle. I don't know if you caught on to that, but there's a serious power struggle over the senior center going on. A lot of, um, personal issues have caused some certain feelings about some situations at the senior center. There have been some legal issues. There is an attorney involved, so some of the things we just can't reply to tonight. We're here for the budget. A few big things did happen with the budget and with the finances of the Soldatna Senior Center and that is we had a very old accounting program that was being used and we transferred over to QuickBooks. We uncovered a lot of questions about the finances of the senior center and so Lamb and Tutor are going over everything. Um, I do agree with Jan on a lot of what she said. We do provide important services to our seniors. Um, I'm there every day. It's still as they described it. It's a fun place. People are there. Pearl's still there. She has a great time. I mean, it's a good place still. We are, we haven't lost any services. We're still providing the services that were in place when these people were there. And we would like to continue that. It has been a bit of a domino effect. Once funding was lost in one area, then that was taken and run with. And there's been some undermining by some people, um, that, like this, the borough. It's not just a matter of us being here and answering budget questions. It's a lot of people coming in with personal things. And they were there and then they got fired. Well, that's not, that's nothing to do with the budget. And that's what we're here for. And we're trying to stop the domino effect, which has been happening. We lost funding on one grant and then, you know, things are being said at meetings such as this that are stopping us from getting other funding that has always been there. And I'm just sick and tired of the fighting, to be honest. And I don't know if I can answer any questions about the budget because I'm, I haven't dissected the budget. I haven't looked at the budget. I, I'm.
Any questions from council? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Riley, for coming tonight. You mentioned an audit is underway right now. Do you know when that financial audit will be complete?
I'm not sure it's an audit. There showed.
There is no audit.
Speak to that. Lamb and Tutor are looking over the books to try to make sense of what was there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, one time. Anyone else? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, Mayor, well, I'm hoping I have a little more. I didn't realize I was going to be on trial here tonight and I'm not very happy about this way this is proceeding because this is a budget hearing. It's not about personalities or how things are run. And I hope Janet Bauer, that you never have to face what I'm facing here tonight because I feel it's very inappropriate. Part of the problem.
Go ahead, Ms. Care.
Yes.
I am very uncomfortable with continuing this discussion in this vein. It's been mentioned possibly there's lawyers involved. We're here to deal with our budget. That's what we're, we're here for. So I just, I, I do not believe this discussion should continue here. Whether it needs to be in a different session, um, again, um, I'm open to that, but I'm very clear that we have an obligation to protect everyone and everything they say. And all those people who have been part of the seniors forever, again, I, I'm very concerned, uh, that we're doing a disregard to a lot of people. And so respectfully, sir, um, I'd ask that any further discussion of this matter be severely restricted to the point before us, which is whether or not solely the city should fund the grant to the senior citizen center.
Thank you.
And what I'd like to do is present some new documentation that is appropriate, is accurate. Okay.
All right. We started your three minutes over.
Okay.
And limit yourself to discussion of the budget request that you put into the city.
Okay. Yeah, no worries. Uh, so we've been working with Melanie. As stated before, when I took over the position, we had an MIP program that was actually designed for nonprofits that are large and it was very cumbersome and we had a lot of problems dealing with that. So we made the decision to move everything to QuickBooks, which is much, uh, more user friendly for us. And Lamb Tutor has been helping assist with that. While I was on vacation in Hawaii, a board member got some information that was not appropriate. So I have new financial figures for you. Can I present them, please? Lisa, you should have that paperwork. You ran copies of the new finances. I also have a brochure that explains our services. We served over almost sixteen thousand meals last year. We drove, drove twenty-three thousand miles. We offer fitness classes, exercises. I'd love the, the assemble, uh, the council to have this too. Is that okay if I pass this out, please? Lisa, could you please pass that out? We are not, we are not in a loss. When I took the position, this is for the budget, please let me state this. They, there was accounts in eight different banks. My husband and I literally had to fly to Seattle to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of an account that nobody was, everyone on was deceased. I spent nine months trying to sort out the banking situation at there. We are good. The endowment, things have been moved to get, the endowment, when I took over, was making zero point zero zero two five. As of today, the endowment fund has, it, when I transferred it to a higher yield, um, Edward Jones, I'll just say it. It was three hundred thousand today. As of today, I printed this just today, four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars in the endowment account alone. We are financially stable. It's just taken a long time to get accurate records. We have been working on this since last January, trying to get the MIP funds into QuickBooks. And I, and Stephanie Lamb is writing a letter to support the fact that she feels we are going forward in a financially good way. You know, there's a lot of other things that went on, but I, again, we're not on trial here. This is not about personalities. I, you know, I, I, I think it's very sad that these people can't let this go. We had three new members join today. How many of you have been to the senior center? Can I see a show of hands? When's the last time you came? Okay, I might have, I must have been gone. Anybody else?
It's been four years since my father passed. Used to go all the time.
Oh, okay. Well, I want to invite you down there because it is a wonderful, happy, beautiful place. Cheeseburger Friday, it's backed out. We have live music. We have people that are enjoying life. When I got the first position that I got at the senior center, it was a reach out to people that had been isolated from COVID. We found three seniors that first two weeks that were commit, ready to commit suicide and we saved their lives. We are still saving lives. Our Meals on Wheels program unfortunately found multiple, several dead people en route. We've had to send people to hospitals. We are still active, vibrant, and we have younger members every day that are joining. So unfortunately, I feel, I'm sad that these people don't want to feel comfortable coming there, but there are lots and lots of people. We are over three hundred members currently. They're current members participating in activities and events. So I'm asking you to fund us because I just feel concerned about the misinformation that's been spread through this community.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes.
So you're Ms. Spalding? You didn't introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, it's a little, been a little stressful here.
So this document, this budget FY twenty-three, is this from, from you guys?
Yes, we just finished that today.
We also got one, a profit and loss. It's a little different. So anyway, just wanted to clarify that this came, this came from you.
Yes.
If the city of Soldatna were to provide funding to the senior center, what would you do with those funds?
That would be to continue programs, um, such as our Meals on Wheels and, um, our transportation. We have exercise classes. So yes, there's always a need for, you know, more financial support. We just continue the great programs we're already providing. And, uh, just carry on. We just continue the great programs we're already providing and just carry on. We do serve the seniors of this area very successfully.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Whackler.
There's been a lot said about like stuff screwing up and things, you know, just lots of stuff. But it has been confirmed that you guys did lose some funding sources that were available. Um in your opinion, is there a reason, is that, would you want to speak to that specific reason?
I will speak to it because I'd love to invite you to come over to the senior center on May thirty-first. The head state, head department of senior and disability services is coming specifically to talk to me about the grant situation because there were some mix-ups. Um and I'm not going to go into details because again, this is going to become a legal matter. He is coming to see how they can reinstate those funds for us because he feels that they were, it was in error that, that I didn't have all the information I needed to present that grant. And it's printed. It looked, to me, it looks beautiful, but I guess there were some things missing I didn't get. I wasn't forwarded emails and stuff that were, and I believe my bookkeeper gave me the budget for that. So when it says the budget wasn't right, well, no, who did that? Not me. It was the bookkeeper.
Any other questions from the council? I do have, I have one on this, excuse me, on this document you handed us. You show a gaming expenses, but I'm not seeing any gaming income.
Oh, well, let's, can I see the one you gave him? Is that, which one is that? Is that the profit loss or the?
Titled Saldana Area Senior Citizens Expenditure Summary.
This one? Okay. Okay. So that has been the problem with this whole thing, working with Lamb Tudor, is that we've had difficulty ident. When we started the process, we were missing two hundred thousand dollars. It was not recorded in any system. We also had some funds that had been transferred between board member accounts and our accounts that we had to track down and try to figure out what happened with that money. Uh we don't, I want to, don't want to say too much because again, this is going to become a legal matter. But you have to understand that we had a lot of financial questions when we started the process of moving from MIP to QuickBooks.
Okay. Well, my question is, what's the income?
Well, if it's not here, I can't, I, I don't want to, uh, I don't want to quote you a wrong number, uh mayor. So could I get that for you and send it to you?
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
Um thank you, Mayor Whitney. Based on this profit loss that we received on five nineteen, this date of five nineteen, twenty twenty-three, it shows total income of one million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-five cents. From fifteen, I haven't counted them, but about fifteen different sources. And that was distributed to council members by Melanie yesterday.
Can I say one more thing? So those numbers are really high because during COVID, I, I got a lot of money for the senior center, like over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in COVID grants. So that year looked really, really good. And we still have some money left from that and some supplies left from that, and so it's carrying over.
So that income statement that Vice Mayor Parker just mentioned is, you're saying is not correct?
It should be, it's, it's mostly accurate, yes.
Any other questions in council? Saying none. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for your time. I really appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four? Saying none, a public hearing is closed and the back before the council. Are there any council comments? Vice Mayor Parker, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. I appreciate everybody who has come and spoken tonight about our, our budget for the next two fiscal years because it is a biannual budget. I definitely appreciate the work that Melanie M. Holt, the department heads, former city manager, Stephanie Queen put into pulling this two-year budget document together. Tremendous, tremendous work and we've, this is the second time we have adopted, that will adopt a biannual budget. With that, I have a couple of amendments that I would like to propose. So if I could start with one unless there's council comments in general.
Go ahead.
My, my first motion, Mayor Whitney, is to increase funding for Salteshi Trails Association to the requested amount. On page sixty-three of the budget, I would amend the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five document by line item by five thousand dollars for a total budgeted amount of twenty thousand dollars for both FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Currie. Any discussion? Vice Mayor Parker.
I appreciate the work that Salteshi Trail Association has done. It's a tremendous volunteer program. The city of Saldana does collaborate with them periodically on, on different things. But what they have provided to the Central Peninsula community and the trails that they have put in is tremendous. And it is, it is a nonprofit group with a lot of great volunteers that are out there cutting trees and, and upgrading trails. So I appreciate your support. And this originally would have come from Councilmember Chilson, but being out of town, I am carrying it now.
Any other discussion? We'll call for the vote on the amendment.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Uh the amendment to the budget document, twenty twenty-three dash zero one four has passed on a five-zero vote with one absent. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Uh my second motion would be to allow for travel for the mayor, vice mayor, a council member and the city manager to travel to Washington DC in conjunction with the National League of Cities Annual Meeting. I would move to amend the FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five biannual operating budget document on page seven, increasing line item oh oh one, one one zero zero point four two one zero zero, travel and training by thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total budgeted amount for the two fiscal years of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. An addition on page ten, city manager increased line item oh oh one point one two zero zero point four two one zero zero, travel and training by four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for a total budget amount for the two fiscal years of nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is my motion. And if I have a second, I will speak to it.
Second.
Before we go too far into this, the page document I'm looking at has a different amount for fiscal year twenty-five in both those budgets.
This is increasing.
Yes. The document I'm looking at says for total budgeted item of, amount of twenty-nine, five seventy-five and fiscal, fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five in fiscal year twenty-five. And I believe your motion only said the same now for both of yours.
I would refer to, ask the city clerk or our finance director who worked in pulling together these numbers to help clarify. Is it annually the thirteen, five, seven, five?
Through the mayor and council member Parker. Um I would have to defer to Melanie. I gave her a very rough budget and she made magic out of it.
So the, the dollar amount for each year is an increase of thirteen, five seventy-five, but the amount, um the original budget was different for each year. So that makes the ending amount different for each year. So for FY twenty-four, the ending amount would be twenty-nine, five seventy-five. And for a twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, it would be twenty-nine, seven seventy-five. And then for the city manager budget, the ending amount would be nineteen, two twenty-five for fiscal year twenty-four. And for fiscal year twenty-five, it would be nineteen thousand, five twenty-five.
So you want to change your friendly?
That, that is a friend, that is a friendly amendment. It's clarification.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mayor, Mayor Whitney, in support of this motion, as I look particularly over the last three years since COVID, with the amount of federal funding and the interaction that we have had with our congressional delegation and funding sources in Washington DC, the need for the city of Saldana to interact more. We are also making more requests and receiving more support to these requests that we're getting for capital projects around the city. So I think it is important for the city of Saldana to make that presence in Washington DC. And so that is why I proposed this amendment.
Any other discussion? And I fully support this. We'll call for the vote, um this amendment.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
That amendment passed it on five-zero vote with one absence. Moving on. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Motion number three is to increase the city clerk's salary for the upcoming biennium. I would move to amend FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five biannual operating budget document, page nineteen, city clerk. First increasing line item oh oh one point one five zero zero point four oh one zero zero, salaries by fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-six for a total budgeted amount in FY twenty-four of two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and four. And in FY twenty-five, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six. Second increase line item zero zero one, one five zero zero point four zero three zero zero, personal leave by one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars for a total budgeted amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and one dollars for fiscal year twenty-four. And for fiscal year twenty-five, eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. And increasing line item oh oh one, one five zero zero four oh five zero zero peres by three thousand, four hundred and nine for a total budgeted amount in FY twenty-four of forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And in fiscal year twenty-five, forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-four. Increasing for FICA line item oh oh one, one five zero zero four zero six zero zero by two hundred and twenty-four dollars for a total budgeted amount of four thousand, twenty-one dollars in fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Increasing line item oh oh one, one five zero zero point four zero eight zero zero, workers comp by forty-seven dollars for a total budgeted amount in FY twenty-four of six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six hundred and thirty-five dollars in FY twenty-five. I would also move to amend the FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five budget document, page sixty-three, non-departmental increasing line item oh oh one, one seven zero zero point four five zero seven zero peres on behalf by four hundred and eighty dollars for a total budgeted amount of one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, one thou, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars for FY twenty-four and a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two in FY twenty-five. And updating the remaining budget document accordingly to effectuate these changes. That is my amendment. Short and sweet.
Have to come up for breath here now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
That amendment, which I'll call number three, passed on a five-zero vote with one absence. Vice Mayor Parker.
I have one additional amendment. At the request of the administration, I would move to address currently updating the pricing of equipment and the move to amend the FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five budget document. First on page eighty-eight, Equipment Replacement Fund, authorizing an increase in line item oh one oh point oh 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 point four five eight oh oh, utility capital of five thousand dollars for a total authorized amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand for fiscal year twenty-four. Also on page eighty-eight, Equipment Replacement Fund, increasing line item oh one oh 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 point four three nine zero zero, depreciation by five hundred dollars for a total budgeted amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars for FY twenty-five. No changes required for FY twenty-four. On page seventy-eight, W W T P, increasing line item oh oh three, five two five zero point four three four zero zero, equipment replacement payment by five hundred dollars for a total budgeted amount of ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars in FY twenty-five. No changes required for FY twenty-four. That is my motion.
And an update to the remaining budget.
Right.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Currie. Uh discussion? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Amendment number four passed on a five-zero vote with one absence. Any further discussion or amendments, Mr. Nelson?
Can I start, please, Mayor, with a question to the administration? I might have to ask Melanie to double check me. So I'm looking at page sixty-three of the budget book and non-departmental. Could you confirm for me? So currently, under Saldana Area Senior Citizens, the current instrument for us shows funding of twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. I know there's been a lot of discussion during our work sessions, but can I just clarify as, as that, the budget is before us? Is that the correct number currently? And I'm seeing Ms. M. Holt say yes.
Indication was yes from the finance book.
Thank you. And another, I'd like to make a motion for Department seven one zero zero, non-departmental account four six two zero six, Saldana Area Senior Citizens, change the FY twenty-four budget amount from twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars to zero. And if there's a second, I'll discuss.
Mr. Currie, thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to bring this forward. Uh there's been a lot of talk tonight. I don't want to get into personnel matters. What I do know is Ms. M. Holt and everybody here at the city does a very good job of making sure public funds are, we're good stewards of public funds. It's accountable and transparent. And just some of the things today, it sounds like some of those issues are, are being straightened out due to various causes that are not the concern of this body, but I'm concerned about. some of those things. So I think by bringing forward this motion, my intent would be to zero out funding for this fiscal year, keep it in for the next fiscal year. The council can make a determination at the mid-biennium update. If some of those issues are resolved and perhaps we'll get more information on that. So that is the purpose of my motion.
A further discussion? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. I am supporting Councilmember Nelson's motion. I am, I'm concerned about the senior center and where it's at, where it's going. Some of the people who testified tonight, I, I trust dearly. I trust their opinion. And when they're recommending that the city not put forth funding at this time, I, I trust their opinion. I also would look, as Councilmember Nelson said, next fiscal year, hopefully we have an audit complete, we have a better handle on what's going on, but we're entrusted with using, being responsible for these public funds. And so I'm going to be supportive of this motion at this time.
Any other council comments? Ms. Hutchins?
Yes, I will be supporting Mr. Nelson and Ms. Parker as well. I feel that we have a terrible break in trust in what is going on at the senior center. And I really feel that we do need an audited statement. And I think that the fact that things looked really, really great on, in 2020, and now they have spiraled down, I really hope that we can get a good audited statement. So I, of course, will be supporting no funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Any other discussion? Ms. Whackler?
I think it's really hard for us to, to remove funding from a a service that we all deem as essential to so many people in our community. And so I don't want people to, I think, listen to all the council members when they're talking about doing this. It's, it's not because we don't want to fund the senior center. It's because we think it's really important. And it's really important for us to get, get on a good path where we all understand what's going on. So I also will be supporting this. Yeah, I, I think a lot of the comments made, I would like to see some, I would like to see some detailed reports and figure out exactly where everything is going and know what has caused these things, specifically not shifting things from, I don't know what happened. I mean, it's been, it's been years that this is a mess. So if, if it needs to come to a head like this, then I guess it, it has to come to a head like this. And that's, I think, the memorandum that we're making today.
Mr. Carrie?
I think for all of us, this is a very difficult, in that we want to be sure perception is valid. My mother was voluntary cook before there was a senior citizen center as such, and it was over at the Lions. I see the former mayor and former state representative, again, a person I greatly respect as a part of the group, telling us to, again, to do this. I listen. I very much appreciate that Mr. Nelson did it for one year, basically said that we want to support the seniors, but we've got a problem right now that we feel a fiscal responsibility to shine a light on and to seek more information and that we at this time cannot go forward. I am a lifetime member of the Saldana Senior Center and very much appreciate the work that is done and has been done and will be done in the future. But at this time, until we have much clearer information, I cannot support providing city funds for this.
Anything further? Seeing none, we'll call for vote. This is on amendment.
Can we get clarification from this, from the city clerk? Yes vote supports not funding and no vote would support funding?
Through the, through the mayor, Vice Mayor Parker, correct. The motion was to decrease funding for FY twenty-four for twelve thousand, from, from twelve thousand seven hundred to zero and to leave it in for FY twenty-five. And so a yes vote would support the decrease for FY twenty-four and remaining for FY twenty-five.
Call for vote.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Amendment number five, defunding the senior center, has passed on a five zero vote with one absent. Any further amendments or changes to the budget? Seeing none, I'll ask the city clerk, do you need the final numbers to be included in the ordinance right now? Okay. We'll take a three-minute break while we take a look at this document. Okay, we're gonna, gonna go, come back into, uh, yeah. Going back in session here. Excuse me, we're going back in session. And Vice Mayor Parker has got the magic numbers. Okay. We're still on ordinance still on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four, and Vice Mayor Parker has the correct numbers to put into the ordinance.
So, thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would like to, under ordinance twenty twenty-three oh one four, amend section two for fiscal year twenty-four. Under the general fund, the amount would be thirteen million eight hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for a total budget for fiscal year twenty-four of seventeen million eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. Under section three, amend the general fund number to thirteen million eight hundred and thirty-two dollars three hundred and sixty-eight. The utility fund would be two million six hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and two. The equipment replacement fund would be two hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred for a total budget for fiscal year twenty-five of seventeen million eight hundred and five thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, we will vote on that amendment, which should be amendment number six. For those keeping track. Call for the vote.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker? You have five yes votes.
The amendment passes on a five zero vote with one absent. We now have before us ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Whackler?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one four, the biannual budget for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five passes on a five zero vote with one absent. Moving on to the next items on the agenda. And that would be down to action memorandum twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, Kenai Peninsula Borough Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven amendment introduced by Vice Mayor Parker. May I have a motion to approve?
Somu?
Second.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And we'll have a report from Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Unfortunately, I was out of town when Planning Director Ruffner came to the city council meeting on May tenth to discuss a proposed amendment to the borough code to change the representation on the Borough Planning Commission to reduce it from fourteen members to nine members with the nine members of the planning commission being reflective of the current assembly district seats. And after some discussion with a number of individuals, you know, in my previous life, I did serve as planning director and had the pleasure of having Assembly Chair Johnson serving on the commission while I was planning director. We had eleven members and we had great representation from all areas of the borough, including the cities. So what I am requesting is that the council have our city managers send a letter on behalf of the city to the assembly and the administration requesting some proposed amendments to the, the ordinance. And it would increase the number of planning commissioners from nine to eleven. That two seats would be reserved for home rule and first-class cities located in the borough. And that only city residents sit, would be allowed to apply for those two, two seats. It would be set up on a rotational basis between the first-class and, and home rule cities. And that also no city would have more than one representative on the planning commission. I think, and there's been discussion that we need to have, there needs to be continuity between the assembly and the council and the planning commission. But one of the other items I think that there needs to be is there needs to be, there needs to be inclusion. And if you are excluding the cities from participating and being members of the planning commission, it's showing you, showing the cities that they don't matter. They don't um, it's showing you, showing the cities that they don't matter. They don't care. And, um, it's not going to create any significant more work going from nine to eleven, so I would hope that the council would be supportive of having the city manager send this letter, um, and see what the Assembly thinks. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hands if you would like to part, uh, comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star and iron on your telephone. And, uh, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Mayor Whitney, Vice Mayor Parker. I'm, uh, here to speak on some of the issues that each year that they've been carrying. So, um, the, uh, yeah, so, planning commission went on at eleven and then one day it wasn't like, um, the assembly that I was still seeing. And I have a problem, like, similar to something that happens on the borough, something that or two. So this time went on, uh, we kept, uh, like, we were about five things, so then, um, the planning commission. So, one of the things that's on my heart, from the time I got on the assembly, I thought, hey, we hear something, I know something about it. It's been a few years, but I can't keep in, you know, the, the fourteen, uh, planning commissioners. I advocated for, we had five, so. Finally, last year, we, uh, Whitney, uh, gave you know, finally, last year, we, uh, Whitney, uh, gave like, we advocated the, 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 like, eight changes in the law. And, like, we did, and so, uh, one of the rarest things in my life, if you just think that, okay, right. And so now, uh, the choice is before us. We don't have to have. I, uh, reflect on the time of.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um, so, in whether we should reduce it to eleven, I, uh, obviously, we were saying it helped well, and not any of these. I think that it's not done, just as you do on the assembly, just as you do on the I'll respect your request. We will, we'll certainly be maybe on the planning commission, or on the assembly. I know that, uh, I, uh, said we talked as, um, men, that we would like to stay, get made on the clock, which is perhaps help the, uh, the goal that, um, as far as that. The bottom line is that, um, the planning commission members, the county members, you have the district, you're elected by the district for December, so we want that planning commission. I get all the people, all the folks, and I don't tell them, I don't know, not my interest is strong, I feel that I just make it all, and it's interesting, but, uh, it's exactly the same on the planning commission. When I was on the planning commission, there was never a time when the area inside the city, the area outside the city, I thought that never happened. Then, the city of O'Donnell, under the old existing code, um, they wanted to, somebody to, I think, to support that, doing that, and it'd be difficult. Especially because the mayor was somebody that didn't want to, and so while I mentioned that there were three wonderful planning commissioners, sometimes you'll have the mayor that, even if he was not to be able to. And so, I think that, um, I think that nine is a good number, and that if you want but I'm all for, um, taking questions and, um,
Any questions or comments from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for coming, um, and sitting through the last couple hours. So, when the borough went to Juneau last year to propose changes to that part of Alaska statute, and I have it in front of me, um, it was changed so that the only way that this part of Alaska statute now impacts only one borough, and that is this borough. What was it that you had originally proposed? It, because this got amended in, I think, uh, Senate Labor and Commerce?
And, uh, so, pretty much, uh, we started, uh, currently, um, and so, we worry because you're not supposed to, uh, you know this, as I recall, all the other boroughs that you have two seats, based on the first-class, you can say, all the other five. And I don't remember.
Any other questions from the com, or from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
Um, for the, um, Mayor, President Johnson. My question is, you say you have fourteen, but there aren't fourteen people. Is that correct? And when I was looking at the minutes to the meeting, I was seeing that, um, rarely did I see twelve people. In fact, it's usually eight, ten, or eleven that actually show up. So, how much money would we really be saving?
Mayor, again, uh, I can like tell you that the number that, something in the, uh, the number that
But that's for a full complement.
No, I would assume it is, but I'm not, I'm not sure if that is a number that they, 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 uh,
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
I remember my question. So, can you explain to me for those assembly districts that have both cities within their boundaries and areas that are in the borough, um, Homer, Saldovia, Saldatna, Seward, um, how would people, would people within the salt, the cities be able to apply, or how is it that the planning commissioners get selected? And the proposed ordinance?
So this, this is, uh, as, uh, you have to, you have outside of the, you have when you have overlapping districts and O'Donnell, and you kind of, very, some of that. Uh, the people that are outside the city, they remain the mayor unless they're inside the city. That's how it exists right now. And I guess you may do that as a big problem. I don't see that as a big problem because the mayor, they simply, they just made
So, someone had explained to me that the way that it would be set up, particularly for Saldatna, because we have a small population, that Saldatna basically is excluded, and it's only people from areas outside of the city that would be considered to be a member of the Planning Commission.
Hey, uh, like, they look, he has that way, got nine districts. So, we're connected collectively, so names of the city's mayor, whether a person is inside the city or outside the city, they'll still represent the, uh, just like I was talking, there's inside the city, you have, and there's a lot, but you sort of know that, somebody that's outside the city, you're, you're in the thing with the other thing, I mean, so there's a thing, somebody, uh, for a city like, because they, you know, have small populations, they I would agree, it's not their option, you, for all years, so, on your plan, however, um, I would say that there's a chance that the statesmen will come to Saldatna someday, and everybody will say, oh, you're obviously not like, now, uh, when the assembly is, uh, fifteen members, um, somebody who's very, who knows very well, that, uh, Now, that when the assembly is fifteen members, the assembly is very, very well, that the general cannot say that I'm, oh, the Trump, the D, supported using that being, or the quote, he didn't only knew that it meant that the property was. But it ends up that hopefully, then, it's in the. A things are, if you're going to have nine, then that's. I don't, I don't see that the workforce is just filed for that. When I, the president of the assembly, he came to me and said, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm like, you know, ninety, forty, thirty.
Any other questions? Ms. Hutchings.
Yes, I just have, I keep hearing that, well, it's no different than having an assembly member, but assembly members are elected, and these people are appointed. And I think that is a huge difference. Do you not agree?
Well, I do. You know, in a whole lot of diverse areas, things like that, we have a cabinet of elected for fifteen years, we did have a, but we know the. So perhaps the planning vision is more just people that you like.
Any other questions from the council? I do have a couple here myself. I did sit on the planning commission when it was a lot of members. And yes, we did have a conflict between one ordinance that the borough was looking at that had an effect on the city, and I think we were taking opposite, opposite points on that, and that was the private, private roads. Change that was going to be made in that, oh, that was probably four or five years ago. The other thing is, I noticed that the borough assembly is now going to meet in, like, Homer and Seward, is the city council, I mean, planning commission going to do the same thing? Because if that holds true, you won't be saving forty thousand dollars. So I think those are my comments. Anything else?
Do you think I could say one more?
Sure. When I was on, we met at Lanzon and Homer, Cooper Landing Community Center, and the Seward, one of the hotels there that had a big conference room. So room didn't seem to be an issue. Anything else? Thank you. Is Mr. Vice President going to come up now?
Tyson Cox, Assembly Member, District Four, Saldatna. Mine's, Cox can be a little bit different, is, I actually, after hearing tonight, is, and I had stated this last meeting, if Saldatna has something they want to bring forward, I have no problem bringing that forward as an amendment at our meeting. I will say, because it does solve some of the issues that I have with this, and if it doesn't pass, I'm actually going to talk to them about maybe tabling it for now, because IRA have spoken to Representative Ruffridge, Senator Bjorkman. I plan to talk to Representative Vance, because she'll be involved with that, too. Because what I would like them to do is take that portion out. The portion that's still bothersome in the, in the state code Title Twenty-nine is that it states that if you're from a first-class city or home role city, you still have to go through the city to be on that, on the planning commission. Why that's an issue, and so this is the other issue for me, because what going to eleven does is it solves the issue for Saldatna. Well, I don't only represent Saldatna, so I'm trying to solve the entire issue of how would that evenly represent my area? What, what you're presenting, I think, would as well. It would solve for Saldatna and for the area. But if that doesn't pass, which I think there's likelihood that it may not, is, if it doesn't, is what I would like to do is table it, because the two errors that I'm seeing with the way it's written now, and that is the written between the ordinance that we have right now and the state code, what that does is if I'm, let's say I'm not on assembly and I would like to be a planning commission, commissioner, I live in the city of Saldatna, I have to turn in an application to the city of Saldatna. Say there's five people that are qualified from the city of Saldatna, and Saldatna's policy in their own is to maybe only submit one or two. That means one or two of those folks goes to the mayor. If I live in Mackey Lake or the area that I represent on Sport Lake, those folks would be able to just turn their applications into the mayor. What I'm saying is, is for my district, that is not a fair application scenario for those people. It suppresses the people that are in the city, actually, by making them go through two application processes. And so I don't think that's fair. It does not solve the city's issue of wanting a representative on there, but I have to also represent the entirety of this district. The other problem that I see in the way that it's written is it's written in a fashion where there is the possibility that Kenai, specifically Kenai, could have three city members on the planning commission, because Nikiski's seat has part of Kenai, Kenai has Kenai, and Mr. Hibbert's area also has part of Kenai. So there is that possibility that, that Kenai would be represented three times. So I think there are some errors in this. I think it may have been put together in haste, and I think there's some work that needs to be done on it. And so my ultimate goal, if it doesn't pass, would be to talk to our senators, or our senator and our representatives, and for the very least for me, is to get a verbal from them, and if I can get some sort of verbal that it's something they're willing to work on, then I will try and table it for now until we can get that change, and then I, I won't bring it back, but somebody else, if they want to bring it back after that, can do so.
Any questions? Ms. Hutchings.
I have a question. If Saldatna is not going to be able to have a representative by the way the population is, and somebody outside the city is representing Saldatna, and we know how bad the material works site issue has been going on for however many years, many years, and somebody in the area outside the city, right up against the city limits, wants to put in a material works site, we're not going to have any say unless we come to the assembly meeting as individuals or whatever else, because we're not going to have a representative on that body.
Ms. Hutchings, if you're suggesting that the Saldatna representative would be for the material works site, correct? No, I mean, the Saldatna representative for that district would be for that works site, you are correct, is that's the way they would vote. I mean, it's, it's definitely very much a possibility.
Anything else? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. So what I am proposing would benefit Saldatna, Saldovia, Homer, Seward, Kenai. So it's, this proposed amendment doesn't, wouldn't necessarily benefit Saldatna right away, the city of Saldatna right away, it could be Seward and Saldovia. But it would be making the cities part of the process, keeping them informed on things that are going on at, at the borough level. And, and I think having the addition that no city would have more than one representative on the planning commission then does provide for, for having that equity, but this does not, this wouldn't be a, a solution to, to take care of Saldatna, but to, to help the cities be participating in the process, all of the cities.
And thank you, and I do appreciate that. And if you can, I know you said you'd be sending it to everyone, which I think is a smart idea, but just make sure you send it to, to my email address, which is Tyson Cox at kpb.us. And that's something I can get working on to bring that forward as an amendment, because if it just comes to us all in our email, it will just be part of the packet, and that's it.
I believe our city manager and city clerk will be on top of that.
So in, in what I, I do agree with you, that that will, I think that will resolve a lot of the issues I have, too. I'm just saying, where I'm getting my information and saying that I'm not sure that it would pass is from our last huge discussion we had when we went to fourteen, is, I know this was a goal of a lot of folks to get to this nine, and last time, the reason we couldn't was because this had not passed into Title Twenty-nine yet, and so this was the best resolution that they had, is creating nine districts and then having the five cities be represented. But I do see there's going to be a lot of opposition to it. I mean, I'm just trying to be honest.
Anything else from the council? Just have another quick comment. I know in the past, I was on the city planning commission, planning and zoning, and I was also on the city, rural planning commission. I know during that time, it was the city's goal to make sure that it was someone from our planning and zoning commission that actually sat, was the appointed person on the planning commission for the borough. So usually, they were, would be quite familiar with it, and that's currently the way it is now. The city representative is a member of our planning commission. And if I remember correctly, Cindy Eklund, when she was on the planning commission, was also on the sewer planning commission. And one from Homer, Frankel, he also was on the planning commission in Homer area. So we tried to keep experienced people on there.
If, if I may, Mayor, I don't disagree. And just note that in that ordinance, that is one of the changes in the ordinance, is it does talk about what qualifications commissioners should have, and I think it's, it's gotten beefed up a little bit, but if there is, are suggestions on how to beef that up a little bit more, I'm all ears.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Cox. Appreciate your time. Okay, we're down to, I see no one on Zoom wishing to speak on this subject. Any further discussion from the council? I'm hearing no one else wishing to speak. It's back before the council. Any discussion? Call for the vote on Action Memorandum Twenty-Twenty-three dash zero zero one.
Kerry.
Yes.
Parker. Hutchings?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Action Memorandum Twenty-Twenty-three dash zero zero one passes on a five-zero vote with one absent. Moving on to the next agenda item is mayor and council reports, and I'll make this very brief, we have some other things to do here yet. Thank everyone for all the hard work they did on the budget, staff, city manager, especially Melanie and her staff, a lot of work went into it, a lot of time, department heads did a good job, and I think it's a good budget, and I'm glad to see the way it went and passed. And with that, I will move on to council reports on boards and commissions, there are none, and the city managers' report, the first city managers' report.
Thank you. I hopefully will get used to that. Since it's my tenth day on the job, I don't have very much to report, obviously, but I do really want to thank all of you, and as you stated, the staff, for the budget, Melanie in particular, and all of the department heads, the team that Stephanie assembled, I would really speak highly of them and thank them for all their work and dedication to the city and for their help for me to learn what is going on in Saldatna, and I look forward to continuing.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Kerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, as you said, it was your tenth day, and I know that you, if you can, you want to get an idea in early, because there's so many things and. Voters, again, it took three attempts, approved the field house to be built. I would like to ask you to consider, with staff, a way by which, online, we can watch the building of that structure. Now, I don't know exactly what ever entail, but I know technology is wonderful. And again, I think it's always good that when people approve something, they can see the development of it. And again, we haven't built something for a while, and so it's a unique time period, and again, it's an awesome thing, and so that, like I said, I don't know how to do it, but I know with, with your wisdom, your experience with staff, again, if they would approach that idea and see if there is a way in which we can watch the building of that structure. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving on to the next item is public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, I'm looking at Zoom, and I see no hands raised. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is council comments, and we will start with, let's see, Ms. Whackler.
I swear, it makes me. I want to thank everybody for coming to comment and sharing their, their views and letting us know what's going on today. Fun. I also just wanted to briefly remind everybody about what's going on. We've got the change for the Kenai event going on on June third, as well as Pride in the Park will be across the street, same day. We've gotten invitations personally from, from the organizations to, to make, to make a visit at each one of those. And I think it would be a great idea for us to, to be able to be representative of both of those, if everybody wants to see what they got going on June third. I think there's also, I would say, a cancer awareness event going on, so June third, next week is going to be a big one. And then I just hope everybody has a good Memorial Weekend. Thank you.
Ms. Hutchings.
Well, since we've had lots of discussion and we still have an executive session, I'm not going to make any comment.
Mr. Nelson.
I do want to thank everybody that came out. Thanks, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Cox, for sticking through this long meeting of ours. And I do want to, also, I didn't say it, Vice Mayor Parker, I appreciate the amendment or the memo that you drafted, I think that's a good middle ground, hopefully we can get some more.
Mr. Kerry.
Want to always remember those who have died in the service of this country, and so as we approach Memorial Day, I hope that people will appreciate that there are those who have given all, and keep in mind always of the families of those who serve, serve with them. Thank you.
And to add to Mr. Kerry's comment, Memorial Day event, Saldatna Cemetery at two P. M., from there, after that ceremony, they will move over to the Iron Mike and Saldatna Creek Park and do another one there, and then over to the Purple Heart Memorial, which is also in Saldatna Creek Park down by the river. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I said a lot today, and my only comment would be to welcome our new city manager and let you know, usually our meetings don't go this long.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item is executive session. We have an executive session scheduled, annexations, Supreme Court appeal, and recent annexation requests, City Attorney Brooks Chandler, A.S. Forty-four point six-two-point three-one-zero-C-three, matters which by law municipal charter or ordinance are required to be confidential. Therefore, may be held an executive session. May I have a motion to enter into the executive session? Vice Mayor Parker.
Mayor Whitney, I move to enter into an executive session to discuss the status of the case before the Supreme Court and the recent annexation requests filed by local property owners. The executive session will include yourself, Mayor Whitney, council members, city manager Bauer, city attorney Brooks Chandler, economic and development planning director Zarneski, public works director Cornelius, and city clerk Blankenship.
May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Any objections who are convening into executive session? Seeing none, we'll move into executive session in the downstairs conference room.